Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Pennfield TV's Government Access Channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303. It's also online at pennfieldtv.org and social media platforms Facebook and YouTube via Town of Pennfield Television. Following the proceedings, the video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. Simply search for Pennfield TV in your device's app store, and the best part is, it's free. If you wish to address the board regarding any public hearing matter, there is going to be a chance for public participation following the application presentation and comments and questions from the board. For those of you watching on TV at home or some other location, you can certainly submit comments, and I thought it was on both sides. And you can submit comments in two ways. One is to call (340) 8771. The second way is to submit comments electronically through the town's website, pennfield.org. For those of you that are here in present, we'll invite you to come up and speak. We do appreciate your involvement. We find it valuable. We like to get as much information as we can to help us make our decisions. And in fact, we like to note every meeting that we think the town does a really good job of letting folks in the community know what the agenda's going to be so that they can decide whether they want to comment on it in any of these various manners. The town does this in numerous ways. One way is that it puts the agenda on its website. Another way is that it sends, actually sends postcards, or something like postcards, a little card to property owners that are near the application site. And it contains enough information that if a person wants to know more, they can certainly call and find out to make their decision. And the town also requires applicants to put the signs on the property that we've all driven by and seen, basically says the same thing, "This property's under review. If you have any questions about it, call this number." So, once again, we think it works well. We welcome the input. And the way the hearing is going to go tonight, we'll have a work session to address some tabled matters and recurring items such as a review of the minutes. Then we'll get to tonight's public hearings. We'll ask the applicants to come up to a table here and give us name and address. And then we will have the board members walk the applicant through the application details. Everybody should know that the applicants, all applicants, are required to submit a written application with a lot of detail. We get that well in advance of the meeting, and we have a good chance to review it. Go view the site. And so therefore, we're able to have a good enough information that we feel comfortable walking the applicant through the process. So we'll do that, and then at that point, we'll open it up to any comments or questions. And I think that about covers it, so I'll ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much. So the first order of business for the work session is the approval of minutes from the January meeting.
Make a motion to approve as written?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as written and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes. And then on to the tabled applications. I think the first tabled application, we've had a request from the applicant to continue to table it so she can do a little bit more homework and research.
Yes.
Okay. Well, then I'll make a motion to table for the reasons requested by the applicant till our next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay.
This is why I don't second.
So now we find out who Dan likes the best.
Every single time.
You got it?
I'm putting you and then Andres.
Wow.
That's perfect.
Or you could do Laura.
That's perfect. No, no, no.
We have a motion to table in two seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now the second tabled item, we have the applicants, I think we have them online. I hope we do.
Stand by one second, Dan.
There we go. Can you hear us, Mr. Galante?
Yep, loud and clear.
Oh, great. Okay. Little bit of a delay there, but that's okay. So this matter's on again, having been tabled for a couple of reasons. The first was we asked the applicant to see if their neighbor would actually provide a letter showing his support for the application, and he has done so, and we've received the letter. And I think the second one was just to give the applicant a little bit more time to consider whether they could live with a reduced variance. Andy, is that right? Were those the two reasons?
Yes.
Okay. And I think on that question, the applicant has submitted an email saying that they are, they would prefer to stick with their original application. So, having said that, George, I'll turn it over to you, your lead on it.
Absolutely. Well, it's good to see you, at least virtually. Hope everything's going well. I had a chance to read through the letter from the neighbor. It was well-written. It certainly covered the question of the impact and how they felt about it, and it was very positive, so we've noted that. I want to just kind of walk through a couple of the findings that we had before, but before I do that, is there anything additional you wanted to add or any questions you had for us?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay, excellent. So, one of the things that we'd like to take a look at is if there'll be a change of the character of the neighborhood. We know we discussed that before. I don't really believe there will be considering the surrounding areas. We're all, we talked about the fact that the, that particular area of the neighborhood, that particular area of Pennfield is zoned such. There are other larger buildings and outbuildings on some of the properties. We talked about whether or not you could actually obtain this, or there was another method to achieve this, and there really isn't based on the size that you need for the number of animals that you're going to have, and the fact that the property that it's on is very narrow. So you kind of have a challenge in placement, being able to achieve what you're looking for as far as the size of the outbuilding. We would consider this a substantial variance because it is 25 percent, and I believe in the past, we've talked that anything 25 percent or higher, we do consider that substantial. That's correct, right, Dan? That was the percentage?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. One of the other things that we did cover on here was whether they would have an adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions. You've already adjusted the building's location in order to be able to ensure that wouldn't be an issue, and you scheduled a company to be able to pick up the manure from the pigs in a scheduled fashion, and they'll be, that will be stored in closed containers. So that would eliminate anything that we would consider either environmental conditions or impacts to your neighbors. And of course, the letter from your neighbor indicated that had never been a problem in the past with you having the animals, so that was, that was also reason that I indicated this was no. This is, of course, a self-created situation, but in this case, because you do, you do work with these rescued pigs, and these are services that you're providing basically as a volunteer to help, help out these animals, and that the outbuilding will enable you to continue to provide those services in an expanded fashion like you had indicated you and your family were hoping to do. So any questions on any of those particulars? Do you want to add anything to that?
Nope. I think you covered it all.
Excellent. Okay. One of the things we'd like to go through is that if approved, are there, is there any ways to minimize any adverse impact? So there are a couple of conditions that we talked about, wanted to make sure we walked through those, and those are still okay with you, and you're in agreement. That you will be constructing this, and you'll be getting any necessary building permits that'll be required for it. They'll be only, you'll only be housing the, these, and training the mini pigs on the properties represented by the plans. The building will be approved for a 25-foot variance only from the 100-foot setback, and there'll be no changes to that variance. The applicant should be, shall also be making sure that the certificate of compliance from the Pennfield Building Zone and Zoning Department will be in place. And we also ask that you, the applicant, will provide proof of their engagement with the vendor to remove the pig manure on a weekly basis so that you would provide, you know, maintain that moving forward. So those are the items that I had. Does anybody else on the board want to ask any questions or cover anything?
I just want to make sure, all the items that you just went through, those were, for the most part, conditions placed upon the applicant last month for the condition of the use permit?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, good. So, nothing really additional, but if I may, I just would like to read one paragraph from your neighbor's letter. It's the second paragraph of the letter, excuse me, and it's, and it's, says, "Their lot," your lot, obviously, "is extremely narrow, and they are looking to line their structure up with my structure, which would make sense aesthetically. It also makes sense in order to give their livestock 25 more feet on the west side, which is away, not only away from his property, but closer to the unused land behind the neighbor on the other side that is a raised septic system." So, you know, there it is, right there. So, he didn't just write a note that said, "I'm okay with it." He went into some great detail about why he felt that the application for the area variance should be granted. So, that's really all I have to say at this point, but I know we still have yet to do seeker on the area variance, I believe. So we can go ahead and address the seeker. I think this is type two?
Yeah, it's a type, this is a type-two seeker, shouldn't require any additional review.
We'll take that as a motion to declare the type-two action, and I'll second that. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, in regards to the merits, while, while we certainly know this is a self-created situation, the act of volunteering to help these animals and provide, you know, a good life for them, as well as, as help placements and fostering, is certainly something that I think is positive to Pennfield as a community. The fact they've worked with their neighbors to relocate the building so that it would be the least impactful, putting up barriers where necessary, and assigning cleanup that would allow the, mitigate any possibility of either, either environmental impact or smells. I think that, based on those and the good works that come with, with what they're providing, I would, I would recommend, will you approve?
I'll second that. So we have a motion to approve by George, a second by me. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So, four to one vote. It is approved. Very good. Good luck. Do, good luck with it, and do everything you can to be, which I'm sure you will, to be a good neighbor out there.
Will do. Thank you very much.
And I hope you guys feel better, too, by the way. Okay.
Thanks.
All right, now we can go to the public hearings for tonight. And may we have the first one, please, Andy?
Sure. Kirk Finkbeiner, Faith Lutheran Church, 2576 Browncroft Boulevard, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a pavilion with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F10 of the code, with less buffer than required under Section 250-7.2-F of the code at 2576 Browncroft Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by Faith Lutheran Church and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 123.08-1-2. This is application number 24Z-0005.
Okay, if we could have your name and address, and then Andres will walk you through the application.
Okay, I'm Kirk Finkbeiner, and I'm here on behalf of Faith Lutheran Church, 2576 Browncroft Boulevard, Rochester, New York, 14625.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you. You had so much fun last year, you wanted to come back again, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's all my fault.
Yeah, well, I don't know. So basically, it looks like last time you were here, we approved the variances that you thought you needed to erect a pavilion to the outside of your structure. We didn't really find any issues that would prevent that variance, so we did approve that at that time. And when, it looks like now that you've got a little more detailed engineering drawings, I think before it was a little more preliminary in terms of the site layout and things like that. They found out the door to the rear is actually four foot eight inches off-centered.
I made the rash assumption that it was in the middle.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. And so now, just based on how it's built, you know, the posts that hold up the pavilion are, in a sense, it would be blocking the doorway if you went from the inside. Is that basically the gist of it, I guess?
Yes, it is.
Perfect. Couple of questions for you. Has anyone considered what it would take to alter the pavilion to either increase the strength, to have less posts, things like that? Is that, is that a significant cost, do you think, that would be?
Well, this, this is a pre-engineered pavilion.
Okay, okay.
It's made in Utah, and I don't think I could talk about it.
Got it, got it. So this is basically like, you know, to be crude about buying a shed, they place it on this, it's already all figured out, it's the dimensions?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. And by doing that, it probably reduces your costs in terms of bringing it in as opposed to having an engineering firm build it for you. Okay. So looking at what we saw, I went through what we approved last time, and really, the only difference from this time to last time is an additional four foot eight inches. And from what I'm seeing on the lot line, you have a driveway that runs along the side that would, the driveway goes between this property line and the structure already, correct?
Correct.
So in a sense, you're not encroaching farther than the driveway, you're not encroaching farther than the existing building, you're still set back from that point, correct?
The existing building is about 38 feet off the property line, and this will be 39 feet four, so.
Okay, yeah, so you got building?
Actually, a little further back than the building that was built in '67, I believe.
Okay, all right.
Seven.
All right, perfect. So we're not going right against the property line, any closer than cars driving by already, in a sense?
And there's a 250-foot woods between us and the church.
Us and the next church, correct, okay, okay. I don't have any additional questions because your application was quite thorough. The plans that the engineer sent over, those were, those are very helpful as well in terms of show that alignment between the columns and the door, and how that wouldn't really work for a flow of people going in and out.
Yeah, this came about when I put in the application for the building permit.
Ah, okay.
I got back as, "Which is right, 44 or 39?" And then I found out that we have to be pretty exact, and...
Yes, sir, yeah, yeah, right, right down to the inch nowadays.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I don't see anybody on the phone with any comments or calls, nor do I see any electronic comments or questions, so I'll ask anyone in the audience, care to speak about this? No, okay, let's proceed with the environmental.
Okay, I'm going to move that this is a type-two action pursuant to seeker requiring no further review.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to declare the type-two and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And to the merits, let's see. In terms of undesirable change, we found nothing in the previous application, and nothing new was identified in this application that the additional four foot eight inches would cause any detriment to the character of the neighborhood. Could they have done some other ways? I'm sure there's alternative options with additional costs, but with a pre-existing plan for a structure that they're bringing in, it's difficult to modify that. So, while yes, there are options, I think it's a little bit cost prohibitive or would require a lot of changes to their plans. Is it substantial? In my opinion, no. The additional four foot eight inches is not substantial in terms of, the existing building is already closer than the, than this proposal. And nothing was identified for the physical and environmental changes from this application or from the last. And while it's self-created, I think most plans are, or most applications such as this are self-created because you're altering your site. There's no way around that. But I will move to approve this application based on those findings.
Second.
All right, motion to approve, Andres and George. Motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll see you again sometime.
Yeah, maybe. We're running out of room, no one.
Thank you.
You gotta park cars, do so.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night. I think our next application is virtual?
Yes.
Okay.
Corey Henken, Public Storage, 701 Western Avenue, Glendale, California, 91201. Request approval for a conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.6-C2 of the code to allow the continued operation of an existing self-storage facility with one apartment by a new owner-operator at 1677 Pennfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by PS Northeast LLC and is owned Limited Business and General Business, SBL number 138.08-1-42.41. This is application number 24Z-0006.
Okay, thank you. So, if we could have folks identify themselves, give us name and address. Boy, I don't know how to tell you to go first, so...
Seniority. Let them figure it out.
Somebody just start, and the other two be quiet until that person's finished.
I'll go first. My name is Corey Henken of Public Storage. I'm Facilities Asset Manager for the Western New York Region.
Okay.
Matt?
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Schaefer. I'm the District Manager for that specific property in Pennfield.
Last but not least?
My name is Francis Tineko, and I'm the Permit Expediter for Public Storage.
Okay, and you all have the same business address? Or is that different? It's in the application, I'm sure. I will just use that one. Okay.
Hi, guys. Good evening. So you're taking what had already been approved as a storage facility location with one apartment, and you guys, did you purchase the property from, from the prior owners?
We did.
Okay. And when did you purchase it?
After you had the purchase date handy.
Yeah, the closing date was August 3rd.
Okay. And out of curiosity, how come you didn't come in here prior to the closing? Or after, just after?
It takes a very long time for us to get things moving in here.
Okay.
Large corporation, and we had to get our pieces in here.
All right. I guess that's honesty.
So in other words, you want to make sure everything's done right, and quality is a big factor. Okay, we get it.
All right. And are you changing anything? Did you change anything to the property itself?
The property is exactly the same. It's, the only reason we're here tonight is to petition for our rebranding.
And does somebody actually live in the apartment right now?
Yeah, we currently, one of our, the application lives there.
Okay. Ingress and egress from the location, that's, there's two points of entry and exit, one on Pennfield Road and one on Plaza Circle, is that right?
The primary is on Pennfield, and then there is a secondary, secondary entrance/exit on the other side.
Okay. And parking, I'm guessing that this sort of business doesn't require a lot of parking. People may run into the office and then go back by where their, their unit is, and park there while they load or unload, and that's probably it, right? This isn't...
That's correct. Yeah, Google Maps is not updated.
Signage, are you going to be adding any more signage than what was previously there? I'm sure you're putting your own logo on it, your name, but are you looking to add any further signage?
No, just replacing.
And it's adequate signage, and you, people can see it from the road, and it's not too much of a distraction, and it's both, it's adequate, right?
Yes.
And your hours of operation, on their web, on your website, it was 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, is that accurate?
That's the property access hour. So, office hours range between 9:30 and 6:00, but our customers can access from 6:00 AM to 9:00.
Okay. And you don't anticipate having any noise issues? You're not hosting parties and bands and letting the people renting your units do the same thing, correct?
No, sir.
How about noxious odors? Are you going to permit any noxious odors to come from, from the storage units? Believe it or not, this is an element, that's why I have to ask it.
No.
All right.
No plans to do that.
And what about lighting? Is there sufficient lighting there? Do you feel like you need more lighting, or it's adequate lighting the way it is right now?
I think it's pretty adequate. I don't know if you'd like to speak further on that, if you feel differently.
I believe, my opinion is the property is well-lit.
Okay. And so it's just safe, and in conclusion, it's safe and fair to say that you're going to be operating it the exact way that it was prior to you purchasing it, correct?
If not, better.
Okay. Wow. All right, I have no further questions.
A question I would ask is whether you've reviewed the planning board resolution that authorized the use back in 2019, and whether you're going to abide by all the conditions that were placed on your predecessor for that use.
I'm sorry, your microphone cut out?
Okay. So, in 2019, the planning board, not this board, but the planning board authorized the, your predecessor to use the property as a storage facility. And you could, maybe you can see it there, well, it's a pretty small font, but in any event, that's the resolution I'm talking about. In that resolution, there are some conditions about how the property is to be used. And what I'm asking you is, do you agree that you will abide by all of the conditions that were placed upon your predecessor? And if you haven't seen it, don't, don't say yes without reading it. This is a very simple, frankly, application, but I, you guys need to know what you're getting yourselves into. I'm sure it's not a problem, but... And, and you know, we don't, I guess, we don't have to make a condition of our approval that they abide by those, but it was good enough back in 2019.
I honestly was just going to make that, those are condition anyway.
Oh, well, yeah, so, then I'm glad I asked because I want you folks to make sure you're all, you know, Matt's going to make a motion to approve this, which is great, but he's going to make it, make a condition that you abide by everything in that.
Matt, I don't see anything here, but I have objections. Do you see anything, do you object?
No, sir.
I want to make sure, this is a, this is a 10-page document, so I want to make sure that...
Oh, okay. Oh, it's 10-page?
It did take a while for mine to open.
No, you're, you're probably looking at the first half of the first page.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Do you want me to scroll through? We'll need time to review this. Is there a way for us to obtain a copy?
Actually, that, that was submitted as part of the application, so I, I made an assumption that you, you did review it, but I can, I'm happy to provide a copy to you.
Well, let me ask you this. Are, you guys are, I think it's been made clear, you're already operating there. You own the, the property, and you're operating it. Is that, is that true? Sorry, Matt.
No.
And, and Andy, no issues as far as we're aware of any compliance with the, the prior resolution?
Nope, no complaints, no, no problems.
Okay. So, I suppose if we tabled it, give them a chance to look at it, they can, you know, with the understanding they can still operate upon their good faith that they will comply with it, and then we come back next month, and they'll say, "Yes, we've read it, and we agreed to buy, buy, buy."
Perhaps they could even just shoot an email, and we can dispose of that without them appearing.
That's fine by me.
But they also sent that to us.
I understand.
Somebody did. Yeah.
If that works for you, it works for us.
Okay, so I would make a motion to table this on, for those reasons.
I'll second.
Okay, so you folks get that we're gonna, we're gonna table it, you're gonna continue to do what you're doing, you're gonna take a look at that document, come back next month, we're gonna say, "Have you read it?" You're gonna say, "Yep." "Are you okay with everything?" You'll either say yes, or some of the conditions probably are moot by this point, but whatever. Yeah, but nothing's gonna change in the interim, you're gonna continue to operate where you are. Makes sense? All right, so then we have a motion to table for that reason, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, see you in one way or another next mo-, oh, jeez. Well, we tabled it, but I, luckily, there aren't any telephone comments or e-participation. Anybody in the audience care to speak about this? No, okay, so we would have untabled it if that were the case. All right, so, did we take a vote?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't think we did.
All right, although, let's do it again. All those in favor of the motion to table, which has been seconded, aye.
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 All right, see you next month. And-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was the last hearing and last application for tonight, so we will stand in recess until our next meeting. Thank you all very much.